Call the meeting to order, please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call roll please.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Bowlin?
Here.
Counselor Stoudt?
Here.
Counselor Furlough?
Here.
Counselor Grizzle?
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
And Counselor Steinhebbel?
Here.
Okay, first up, we have the oath of office for the newly elected officials. If the newly elected officials will step up to the front, please.
I, Mary Stare, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the United States Constitution or in a constitution and the charter and laws of the city of Lebanon. And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office for which I have been elected. Thank you. Great. Woo-hoo. (applause).
Okay, first up, we have electing the council president. Do I have a nomination for council president?
I nominate Counselor Bowlin.
Second.
It's been, is there any other nominations first? Just to check. Okay, seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to nominate Jason Bowlin as council president. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Looks like you're it, Jason.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, first up, we have approval of council minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the December 12th? And the newly elected do not vote on this, this will just be the previous counselors.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council minutes of December 12th, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The minutes are approved. First up on that order of business is the consent calendar. We have the agenda for tonight. We have the COG, C-W-A-C-T, Wayne Reese Camp and Ron Whitlatch alternate. We have liquor license for Thabit Management on San Yam Highway, new outlet, and take a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. Next up is a proclamation.
Wait, you just said moved and seconded. Did we vote?
We did.
On the consent calendar?
It's been moved and seconded and we'll vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent calendar is approved. I thought we did, but it threw me.
I know, Bob.
Yeah.
He's a conspiracy.
First up, we have a proclamation for the 5-2-1-0 Healthy Community Challenge, February 1st through March 2nd, 2019. Whereas the health and well-being of Lebanon's residents is a primary concern outlined in the city's strategic action plan, and whereas citizens can be positively impacted through encouragement and promotion of healthy lifestyles, and whereas Live Longer Lebanon is a coalition supporting these goals, and whereas the 5-2-1-0 Healthy Community Challenge encourages five or more servings of fruits and vegetables, two hours or less of leisure screen time, one hour or more of physical activity, and zero sugary drinks exclamation point. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul R. Aziz, do hereby proclaim February 1st through March 2nd, 2019, as Lebanon 5-2-1-0 Healthy Community Challenge, and encourage all citizens to participate in the challenge to instill the best practices in health and wellness. Okay, first up, we have presentations. Chris Latimer from the Boys and Girls Club.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chris Latimer, 33886 Tennessee Road, Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Clubs of the Greater San Yam. Mayor Aziz and council members, thanks for having me. It's been a while since I've been here. I believe you have my presentation in your packet, and I know I'm setting a timer because Linda reminded me several times I only have 10 minutes. And I can talk forever about the great work that we're doing for kids in Lebanon and in Sweet Home, of course. But on your agenda, I know it does say that we're going to do just an update on the 21st Century programs, but what I'd like to do is really bring you up to speed on everything the Boys and Girls Club is doing in Lebanon right now, including our 21st Century Centers. So, I'm not going to go through every slide here, but you can turn the pages with me as we go, and I'm going to start on page two with these lovely young ladies. And just a reminder that the Boys and Girls Club of the Greater San Yam is dedicated to helping our community thrive, and that's by investing in kids. And this is kind of a silly thing, but a couple of weekends ago, I was watching NFL football, and one of the guys has a foundation, and it's all about investing in kids. And he kept saying, "The easiest way to change our future is by supporting children today." And it stuck with me, and so I included that quote on this page because that's really what I've always felt, and I believe that's what our Board of Directors feels as well. The next page, you've probably seen it before because I include it in every presentation I do, it's data about, oh, and it's up there and up there. Sorry, I'm trying new contacts for the first time, and like, that's a little hard to get used to, but you don't really care about that. So, anyway, the concept here is that children who grow up in poverty fall behind their peers who are middle-class often. Poverty can attribute to up to 20% of the grade loss by the time they start high school, and it's because they lack the enrichment that middle-class kids do, or they may be not getting the nutrition that they need, they may not be getting the homework support they need, and a variety of different issues. So that's just some data that tells you that the work that we're doing really is pointed at helping low-income children achieve at the same rate as their higher-income peers. And that's how we'll change the trajectory for those families over time as well. So, I've got my big, strong brains here, we're all about leveling this playing field, and I'm going to start with our Fifth Street location. Most people in town think of the Boys and Girls Club, they think of our big building on Fifth Street, they're across from Century Park. And I'm just going to briefly hit on all the programs that are going on there, because often I get telephone calls, "Hey, Chris, can we use a space to do this?" Or, "Hey, Chris, can we use a space to do that?" The building is being utilized more and more every single day, not only for children, but we have LBCC in there now, they're doing three classes this term in our building. Lebanon Community Schools, Alternative Ed uses our gym four days a week now. We have a pickleball club, that's at the bottom of this table, that's on this Fifth Street table. Our Kids Club Child Development Center, I know some people are very familiar with Kids Club, that's our full-day state-licensed child development center. It runs from 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. every day, 25 kiddos ages 3 to 5. That's a fee-based program preparing kids for kindergarten, and also giving parents a solid place to go for childcare here in Lebanon. Oh, my timer went off, so someone will just have to tell me when I run out of time. We also have Kinder Club. Kinder Club is new, we started that about three years ago. That's an after-school program targeted at kindergarteners. We weren't able to incorporate Kinders into our big after-school program, it's just too chaotic, too self-directed, so we actually started a separate program for Kinders after school. Of course, we have our first through fifth grade after-school program, and you can see the number of kids that are served in each of these programs is in the very right column. That program is getting more and more robust all the time. Kids have an opportunity to take part in STEM activities, tutoring, homework help, and a variety of other things. How am I doing on time, Linda?
You're fine.
Okay.
The mayor will let you know.
Okay. And of course, then at the bottom is the list of the other activities that are going on in that building. We've implemented some new technology in that building, so we're actually going to be tracking everybody that comes into the building every day, all day long, to use the building, so we're going to be able, when I come to you next time, I'll actually be able to talk to you about general community outreach and the use of that Fifth Street building. That building, when you look at the historic, the artifacts related to the Capitol campaign and its building, was that was supposed to be built for the community, to be a community center and Boys and Girls Club, and I think we're getting back to that focus, and so we're super excited about that. Also, on the same property, we have the old JC building. If you grew up in Lebanon, I always think of it as the old JC building. Our Kids Club Child Development Center uses that building in the afternoon, so the kiddos move out of the big building over to the smaller building, and that allows us to have the Kinder Club come in in the afternoon. But in the mornings, Pumpkin Seed is in that location, and a lot of people don't know that the Boys and Girls Club actually owns and operates Pumpkin Seed now. So, we've been in that position for about five years, and we have a waiting list of people are calling as soon as baby is born to get into the three-year-old class, and so that's something I just expect to continue to grow. At Pioneer School, we have a pre-K club that's funded through the Lynd Benton Lincoln ESD, and that's in partnership with Lebanon Community Schools. It's a free preschool for qualifying families, so families that are at least at 40% of the poverty level can apply to have their preschooler in that program. And it's really neat, if you go to Pioneer School and you walk right in the front doors, it's in the big, open, the area that used to be the sixth-grade science room, that's our preschool now, and it's just so neat to see those kiddos in that building, because the majority of them are going to transition to be Kinders in that building the next year, so they learn how to function in the building, they get to know the building, and that's that, there's 20 kids in that program. Over on Second Street at the Teen Center, the building that the city owns and that we're very grateful, I just can't even, I won't go, I won't beg, you never take it away from us, because I know there are things that it could be used for, but I don't know what we would do without it. In the mornings, that building is used for alternative education for high school students, and that's a program we've been working with the school district on for five years, I think this is the fifth school year that we've had that program, and there's about 45 high school students every morning that are there, and most of those kids have been expelled from the high school, and they're on a GED track or credit recovery, but likely not to return to traditional high school. And then in the afternoon, it's one of our 21st Century sites for 6th through 8th graders, and we see about 30 students a day in that location. And then I just, I also listed under that that we have, related to the 21st Century Centers now, we have a one-hour tutoring session at Seven Oak, at 7:00 a.m. every morning, and that program's growing and growing. A lot of kids who are athletes in middle school, they need that opportunity to get the support because they're going straight to practice, so we actually have staff and folks on-site at Seven Oak. Over at the Vault, that's the next page, that's our building on Key Street, and that's a program that is in partnership with Jackson Street Youth Services, which originated in Corvallis, expanded to Albany, and now they are doing some outreach here in Albany with us, and with the Mennonite Church. They had the building, and they came to us and asked if we would like to start a high school program. They saw that as a need, because a lot of the kids that leave the high school, they go and lay loiter around over around the Mennonite Church, and so the congregation saw that as a concern. So, I believe this is our fourth year at the Vault, and you can see the acronym there, the kids developed this, Versatility, Acceptance, Understanding, Leadership, and Tenacity. We don't see a ton of kids over there, which is fine, because it's, Jason would say, "Yeah, you can't have a ton of kids in that building." You know, 20 is just right, but it is, it's a house, and so there's actually a kitchen, there's everything that we need to serve a fairly disenfranchised, often, group of high school students, and they may need anything from food to hygiene, they need counseling, we've intervened on two suicides in the last three years. It's a place where high school students can get the support they need during really difficult time in their lives, that adolescent period is so tough for so many kids, and so many families here in Lebanon are in poverty, and they just need that little bit of extra support, and we're happy that we can provide it. At all of these sites after-school, we provide a free after-school meal, it doesn't matter if it's at the Teen Center or the Vault, we are able to do that, and we're serving about 57,000 meals a year here in Lebanon. Oh my gosh, that's my timer, and that's 10 minutes. Somebody asked me a question about the 21st Century grant.
Chris, tell me about the 21st Century Community Learning Center.
Yay, thank you, Jason. It just happens to be. On the next page, we did receive funding, I knew I would do this, I'm sorry, we did receive funding from Oregon Department of Education in partnership with Lebanon Community Schools and Sweet Homes Schools, a $500,000 a year grant to provide 21st Century Learning Centers in both communities. We've started three centers here in Lebanon. The first is at Pioneer School, it serves 5th and 6th graders from any school in Lebanon, including East Lynn, children are invited to attend. The school district actually buses from all their sites to our after-school site at Pioneer. Then we have the Teen Center, so we've combined our Teen Center after-school program with our 21st Century program over at the Second Street Old Library Building. And then we have, the third site is for 9th graders at LHS. And the point, the reasoning behind this 5th through 9th grade focus was the 5th to 6th grade or 6th to 7th, it's the transition years where kids transition from one school to the next, that they have the, have large potential to begin to struggle, and if you don't support them, the struggle continues and they don't succeed. And so that's why we focused on the 5th through 9th. We have three years of full funding, and then the funding begins to decrease in years four and five, but we're just so excited about the opportunity to bring these learning centers. I'm sure they're fully funded, and I actually get to hire staff and pay them, and the school district has just been amazing to work with. Each center has three Boys and Girls Club staff, at least one teacher and two instructional assistants, so it's very articulated afternoon that they spend together, so that's what's going on with the Boys and Girls Club. And there's a lot more information in here, but you can read it.
Do you have a question? Are homeschooled kids in Lebanon, are they, are these programs advertised to them?
Homeschool kids would be welcome. We haven't done specifically outreach to homeschool, but they would be more than welcome in the 21st Century Centers?
Yeah, that was, came to mind. I just learned today that there's a co-op of homeschoolers of like 180 kids in Lebanon, that's a huge amount, so.
Yeah, and then there's more than that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Two that aren't part of the co-op, but we, the grant was supposed to be, we were supposed to be notified if we received the grant by July 1st. We found out on, no, by June 1st, we found on July 1st, and then, so we're, I was talking with others when I was walking in, we're actually kind of driving the car while we're putting the tires on it right now, so we're hopping along, so just getting the schools on board was huge, and getting in and getting it started. We're working with East Lynn right now to see if there are kids there who could benefit, and then homeschoolers would be the next step.
Yeah.
That's a great question.
Good. Thank you, I did not realize all the programs that you guys had spread out. I really thought it was a lot more contained into your, just your couple facilities, so it's really great, thank you for the update.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question, but I wanted to thank you and your staff for all you guys do for our community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for the great job you guys are doing.
And congratulations to everybody.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Lebanon Downtown Association update, presented by LDA representatives.
Hello. Do you need another chair? Can you sit there?
There's another chair right here, too.
Is there someone in the slide show? Let me do that.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Okay, sorry.
Linda?
I think so.
Musical chairs.
Couldn't tell.
Sorry.
You want me to run the slide trail?
Great. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing the Lebanon Downtown Association to be here and present to you this evening. I'm Yvette Meyer, the owner of Northwest Apparel and Graphics, and the newly-elected President of the Downtown Association. To my left here is Cassie Cruz, who's our new Main Street Manager, and to my right is Deila Johnson, our former President, our rock, and she helped, I would say probably did 99% of the presentation. So she's here by our sides as an aide to myself and Cassie if we have questions that we can't answer since we're new to this role, okay? We hope to share with you tonight our goals, our accomplishments, and our needs for the upcoming year. Ready? Go! So, the Lebanon Downtown Association, we fulfill many roles. Our focus is on economic development, city planning, historic preservation, public art, downtown beautification, small business development, marketing, tourism, and much more. And we're winded, we do a lot. Our vision compels us to strive towards an inclusive, vibrant community where our community pride is obvious, our sense of place is authentic, representative, and contributes to quality of life. Being part of the Main Street program is an honor, so the Lebanon Downtown Association is part of a national program, and also the Oregon Main Street program. So, only select communities achieve this accomplishment that we have done. And with that accomplishment comes the branding and marketing opportunities that benefit the city and downtown. So currently, I think you should have handouts in your packets that we provided, we're currently at the transforming level of the Main Street Oregon program with 15 other cities in Oregon. Our goal in five years is to be at the highest level, and that is the performing level. There are currently nine cities in the state of Oregon at that performing level. Close to us, we have Corvallis and Albany, those are at the highest level for the National Main Street program. So, the path that took us and where we're at now, it was a long journey, and before it happened, we did not want to lose that designation. Once we became designated, Lebanon had access to coordinating with the state for advice and information about planning, executing, and funding a revitalization vision. So, LDA over the years has had many ups and downs, but the board works very diligently to balance this tremendous amount of expectations from our stakeholders. So, tourism, so we're 15 minutes to the beach and 15 minutes to the snow. So we have a lot of people that go through here, we go ourselves, so we have a lot of tourists that come and visit us and go through town. So we have notable and cultural and natural resources. Supporting economic development in these areas draws tourists and investment downtown while creating new opportunities for landowners. Lebanon has several types of tourism to include ecotourism. Rural downtown serves as a base for people visiting surrounding natural areas, providing these tourists with accommodations, restaurants, and other necessities. Lebanon is surrounded by hiking opportunities, boating, races, and other types of outdoor recreation. So, for someone who's lived here just a few days shy of 52, I've done a lot, and you know, this place is awesome. I can't imagine living anywhere else, and everything that we have around us that we can do. And you know, I know I'm following a cruise here, but I've always said, if I didn't have the club, if the club wouldn't have been here when I was a kid, I wouldn't be where I'm at today. I almost, you know, choked up there, so let's move on. Anyway, you know, it's a great place to live. Public events, LDA attracts tourists with First Fridays, so this is something we just implemented last year. So this is a Promotions Committee event that we put on, so, which I am a part of, I chair that committee. First Fridays, sorry, art and wine and art wa, concerts in the park, which Deila does fabulous at, thank you, Deila, and the merch events that happen throughout the year in our downtown and surrounding area, like the farmer's market, it attracts locals and out-of-towners alike, while creating new economic opportunities for nearby agricultural producers. Arts and crafts, vendors, and local businesses also participate. Athletic events, yes, there are athletic events downtown. Fitness classes, dance and yoga are held in downtown as well as parks and other public spaces, bringing people and new activity downtown. Organized runs and parades attract visitors as well, especially on the weekends. Yes, Strawberry Parade attracts a lot of people. Volunteer opportunities, communities provide opportunities for citizens to improve their downtown, such as power washing, painting, planning, maintaining landscapes, and/or picking up trash. So, and hopefully, we've all been a part of that, and seen how those activities only make us look better downtown or citywide. So, these not only beautify our public spaces, but they build downtown support for local businesses and public investment in the Lebanon downtown. So in 2018, we were able to calculate, we spent a thou, there were 1,004 hours, or just over 1,000 hours were donated by volunteers, with a value of, I know it says 2,400, but it should say $24,000 to Lebanon, so that's what that equates to. So, what is the Main Street approach? What program is the Lebanon Downtown Association involved in? Well, it's a philosophy, and there's four points to the philosophy. It's a proven comprehensive approach to downtown commercial district revitalization. This approach has been implemented in over 1,200 cities and towns in 40 states across the nation with the help of the National Main Street and statewide downtown revitalization programs. So the success is based on a comprehensive nature. By integrating the four points into a practical management strategy, it will produce fundamental changes. So the first point is organization. So it involves building a Main Street framework. That is well represented by business and property owners, bankers, citizens, and public officials. A strong organization provides stability to build and maintain a long-term effort. Promotions, that's the fun one. So, we get to do a lot of fun things, planned fun things that bring people downtown. So it creates excitement downtown, parades, events, and other campaigns to encourage customer traffic. Promotions involves marketing and enticing image to shoppers, investors, and visitors. So the third philosophy is the Design Committee, well, Philosophy. So, these are all committees, Promotion Committee, Design Committee, Organization, and the Economic Vitality. So, design enhances the attractiveness of downtown. So as we are seeing with the King's Building, the Trembles Building, you've been following that, I'm sure, you know, with Wyatt, you know, that couldn't have been possible without us being involved in the Main Street program. So with the grants that were available to us, the programs through the city, that's where we're at, and that's why that's happening, and the King's hard work getting it done, okay? You can move on, it's good. Economic vitality, this involves analyzing current market forces to develop long-term solutions, recruiting new businesses, creating unused space for new uses, and sharpening the competitiveness of Main Street traditional merchants. I believe there may be just one or two empty buildings downtown right now that I can think of, which is good. From, you know, two or three years ago, I, just on my block alone, on the 600 block, I believe there was three building, or at least three buildings that were empty, and I think we're just down to one. So, Strawberry Plaza, from the gloom today to seeing a sunny, you know, inviting place. I know Cassie wanted to say something on the Plaza.
Oh, I was just going to say, there's many thanks for a family member, so for those of you who don't know, I actually live in the heart of downtown, right between Grant and Sherman, in an alley, it's lovely to say, but in a beautiful loft, downtown loft. But with that said, I lack a yard, that's what you give up when you live downtown, but the reward is that my children and I get to play at Strawberry Plaza, we play tag there, kids come out from conversion, you make instant friends. I can tell you, I think I've spent more hours running around in that park that has kept me trim and lean versus anything else I've ever done, and it's with my kids and, you know, and other kiddos that we meet along the way, and it's a blessing to have that for families, and you see more families are utilizing that space, as you said, for yoga as well.
Right. So, funding, so... So nobody likes to talk dollars, nobody likes to talk dollars, unless they're coming to you. Well, it's important that raising funds for the program should not be considered solely of the Main Street manager. So we don't want Cassie having to come to work every day, you know, in your limited time, having to worry about, how am I gonna pay myself? You know, none of us want to go to work, you know, doing that. Well, the downtown revitalization, the downtown revitalization, sorry, is too big of a job for one person, which is why the backbone of the Main Street model is a public-private partnership and volunteerism. As in most nonprofits, volunteers, especially board members, should be charged with the bulk of fundraising efforts so staff can tend to the administrative and operational aspects of the program. So all of the board members on LDA were either business owners or we worked for someone else. So we are all volunteers, none of us get paid.
And we're a work there, you guys are a working board, too.
Yeah, and we are a working board, yes, thank you.
I mean, that's a huge.
Working hard and hard.
Yes.
But the sky's the limit when paid staff and volunteers work hand-in-hand to achieve the mission of the Main Street program. The greatest benefactors, it's the whole community. So potential funding sources, this is what we're looking to, to try to sustain us, sustain our manager. So we're looking to city government for funding. We've come up with a Friends of Downtown campaign, corporate donations, fundraising events, sponsorships, foundation donations, grants, and volunteers. Did you want to say anything to that, Dana?
No.
Okay. It is critical that the City Council and the City of Lebanon support the Main Street effort. Which I have no doubt that you do, and you have been supporting it, and thank you. And those monies have come over the past years, and again, we are very thankful for those. We have tremendous success with First Fridays, Concerts in the Park, and the Wine Walk, but they do not generate enough funding for LDA to continue to keep a Main Street manager at a part-time basis. In order to maintain our standing as a transforming community, we have to have a part-time manager. If we are not able to have a part-time manager, then we drop down a level. We fought hard for the last five years to get to where we're at, so we'll keep fighting, kicking our feet, and we'll keep moving forward. So it takes a community to build a community, and we are only as strong as our neighbors and our partners.
Can we just peek in here?
Huh?
One of the things that we wanted to talk about, and I've been involved with it for 12 years, funding's always been a big issue, and the LDA is asking the city if we, if they would consider monies of $25,000 a year. We have to continue paying the salary in order to keep this position, and we just cannot do it with the fundraising that we're currently doing. We've tried grants, which the grants do not go in and pay for those administrative costs. In order for LDA to continue and to survive, to keep with the Oregon Main Street program, we have to keep, again, that part-time, at least a part-time Main Street manager, and that has been very, very tough. And coming to the city, time and time again, you have been very generous to LDA in helping keep that. We hope that you see the importance of the partnership that LDA and the City of Lebanon have, and that we can continue that partnership.
Thank you. So this is what we want to accomplish. We want small, small businesses to be successful, no doubt, because we are all small downtown, no huge conglomerate down there. We want our community to feel at home downtown. We want the tourists to know they are welcome here. We want local artists to see their creative visions come to life, and we are seeing that, especially in the Plaza. We want our community to feel proud of how far we have come, and we want to build a future together. We want LDA to be sustainable, on a strong foundation and able to grow both in our internal capacity and external impact. So these are our accomplishments. In the last five years, LDA was able to come back from being in the red to being in the black financially. We came part of the Oregon Main Street program and are now at the transforming level. To continue this level, we have to have at least a part-time Main Street manager, or we lose our designation, and I referred to that earlier. We were able to, with the assistance of the City of Lebanon, hire a main, part-time Main Street manager, again, which we're thankful for. So our work is accomplished because of those who come around our table, who support our mission, who invest in our operations, and who advocate for our success. This is a little chart that we put together for 2018. These are the new startups, if you will, of downtown businesses. So investment-wise, that totals just over half a million dollars with over 15 employees, just in 2018. So that brought a lot downtown.
And there's three out here, I believe, that we didn't get the current investments for.
No, we did not.
For three new businesses that are not on here, because we could not get their total invested funds, so.
And who was that?
That was Safe Haven, Frills and Threads, and the Lebanon Music Exchange.
So we were hoping to get those figures for you, but unfortunately we didn't get that.
Still pretty impressive.
So with the events held, we, of course, we have the introduction last year of First Fridays, which we're starting back up again this year. The Wine and Art Walk, we're excited, we're going to, we're gonna move away from the First Friday event with our Wine and Art Walk, and we're gonna do it on the 31st of May to coincide with the strawberry, with the strawberry events. So we'll spin it to be a First Friday of some sort for the Wine and Art Walk, but whatever, it'll be cool and we'll sell it. So we also have Concerts in the Park. And any questions?
So is your intention tonight to, for the, for the council to debate this $25,000, or are you, I mean, what is the timing of that that you're looking at? Because to me, it seems like an appropriate conversation for the Budget Committee. And where, you know, where does that, where does that belong in the budget? Does that come from, you know, what, that's that, what is your timing?
I actually approached KJ Ulfers, and he suggested that I come to City Council because the Budget Committee would not be meeting for several months. This wouldn't go until the new fiscal year, which is until July 1st. So this was kind of the roundabout way to see if we could maybe get our foot in the door so that we weren't coming at the last second of the year.
So for consideration, as we're setting up the Budget Committee and, and, okay.
Mayor, don't we have something in the budget already for downtown?
We did last year, and that was a one-time thing that we had, we had agreed on.
How much was that?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, yeah.
It was eight.
Eight?
Yeah.
I, I was thinking that maybe we could take it up as an item, maybe have staff kind of prepare some information on it, put together what it would look like or what we could do, some possibilities, and then maybe we could have a discussion as council, and then as budget comes up, and then we could look at it at that time.
Be happy to do that.
Is it possible that we can include, like, what does Albany-Carvallis do? Because I know they have also a downtown association.
I'll go farther than that, I'm intending to do a statewide picture of what other downtown associations do and how, how their manager is funded. I think we're gonna find that cities have a lot to do with it.
In talking with mayors at the Mayor's Association Conference that I go to, it's a surprising amount of money that they actually put into the Downtown Association usually.
Yeah, most of your people that are at the transforming level are averaged about $50,000 from their city governments, and it kind of has become an entity of working kind of with the city to coordinate that partnership of them. So we feel even if we can keep on the level of a part-time, would be great at some time that we get a full-time person, but I think that Cassie has some really good goals for this year, and we hope that we have the money to pay her so that we can complete those goals. So we do, we do ask for your consideration.
And I would say, you guys have come a long way, a long way, and you have done so much, and the First Fridays and the, the, the market, everything is just great downtown now. I want to be able to say, you know, why are we putting $50,000 into the Downtown Association and not funding, you know, Shelley's position at the Chamber? So, because we don't do that. We, we fund the Chamber in a roundabout way, but we, but we don't do that specifically. So I just need to be able to, to justify that, and we, we need to have that discussion. So I, I, good job for everything you're doing. It's been a lot of hard work.
And I agree, you guys have come a long way, and in some of the little flops here and there that we've had, you know, or you've had in the organization, I've been very impressed. And that's one of my concerns has been, when we've given money in the past, that it was throwing money after bad money, and I didn't want to see that again. And in the last couple of managers that you've had, so far, I haven't seen you, Cassie, yet, but we, we know you, so we're looking for good things.
Yes, you will.
But I think the hiccups have happened.
It's really looking better.
And we've become, you know, especially the last three years, I think that we've become very, our integrity is very, very high.
Yes.
And we don't beat around the bush anymore. I mean, we are, we're very proud of who we are. We have a huge compassion with some of our board members that, yeah, you might go do your nine-to-five job, and then you go and you work the weekends doing a fundraiser for LDA. Downtown is our passion. It's my passion, I've lived here all my life. Cassie asked me, what are you gonna do if you ever retire? Are you gonna move? Hell, no. This is my community. So this is huge, you know, to, to continue to keep our community growing in our downtown, it's already come so many steps that we have so much farther to go, so.
Dana, what does the downtown proprietors pay, do they pay a fee to the?
Actually, in, in the bylaws, they do not pay a fee. That is why they, they, they really felt that they, they weren't getting enough if they were to pay like a $25 or a $50 a month or a year monies like they do at the Chamber, and they have to pay the dues for the Chamber. I think that with a good manager and more incentives, that could potentially be something that could happen. So I think the Friends of Downtown, the four levels that are there, is something that is a good start in that direction. We have, I know I'm a friend of downtown, Paul, I know you're a friend of downtown. I don't even work in downtown, but I'm a friend of downtown, so that $100 a year that I donate goes to help with what's happening downtown. Our goal is to get more businesses in downtown, to become Friends of Downtown, so that they are buying into what it is that, that is there.
Sure, absolutely.
So I think with Cassie's, with, with what she's gonna be giving out there to these businesses, I think that we're gonna see a huge buy-in from these businesses to be a part of, more of a part of what they are and, and ownership of it.
So am I hearing you correctly that they don't, as proprietors, they don't think they're getting enough improvement as we move down the road here?
I think as we are moving, they are seeing that improvement, and I think they are seeing the buy-in now, but it, it's been a tough road.
Well, it definitely has.
You know, as, as a downtown business, you know, most of our businesses downtown only have a few employees. You know, it's hard for us to close shop, if you will, and go to a board meeting or go to a merchant meeting. You know, at the end of the day, we're tired. I don't want to, I don't want to go to a meeting, you know, what they may seem as an unnecessary meeting, but I no longer look at it that way. It is necessary, and I do have to be down there. I need people downtown. I need the business. Not, I'm not sounding desperate, but you know what I'm saying? You know, we want them to come downtown.
I, I think the, the need is there, and I think the council as a whole is very supportive of the LDA and what you guys have done, what you've accomplished, and where you're going. I get a little hinky wanting to move outside of working through the budget process like everyone else would, and so I, and with Rebecca, I think this needs to come as a proposal for the Budget Committee with a very well-defined plan of action, with some sound financial, sustainable financial processes laid out of how we're gonna make this work, because the scary thing for me is, we've got a brand-new director, and we've got a brand-new board, and we're asking to triple, more than triple, the contribution. And so, and we've talked about the past, and the past is the past, but the past is history, and it's there. And so it makes me a little hesitant unless I see some really well-defined things laid out, but that needs to come through the budget process, not, I feel not as a council item in a, in a regular session. They're, you're a fantastic nonprofit, but our, our city is full of fantastic nonprofits, too, and so it's gotta be a fair and equitable process all the way through.
Agreed, yes.
So is council, then, I'm assuming, does not want to do an agenda item to actually discuss it during a council meeting before budget time?
I wouldn't mind a discussion on it, and I think if Gary wants to do the, the work of putting together the, the proposal and comparing the comps, I'd love to see that because that's important for us, so I think that should happen.
I would also like to see those comps.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think staff should bring to council for discussion, and obviously, that would be good information as we move then into the budget season, which comes up in, what, April, May?
Right around the corner. Okay.
Can't wait for that.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Cassie.
Yes. At this time, public comments. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding the city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, and stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen's provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. Council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody that would like to address council?
Okay, I'm gonna be faster this time.
All right.
So many of you know me, I've been in front of city council many times. We're going to, is this one, this one?
We, we do have new council members.
Yes, and so I brought some information with bullet points so that we can get folks up to speed. So the Guitars and Stars Music Festival, yes, sir?
Your name?
I'm Jason Kreip, I'm the founder of Guitars and Stars LLC. We are heading into the fourth year of our event, and I, I'm just gonna start right out. Greetings, Lebanon council, it's an exciting time for Lebanon and a genuine opportunity to enhance and grow something unique in our community can be proud of. Guitars and Stars was founded by local folks from Lebanon. We are not a large corporation, we are a grassroots event. Our goals from day one have been aligned with community, a community-first approach. The positive impact we've had on our community reflects this. Guitars and Stars can be something special created for our community, by our community. To achieve this, we're seeking the support of the City of Lebanon. We have three requests from the city today. We are seeking an endorsement from the city to ask for an increase in the tourism funding from the Chamber. The Chamber has granted us tourism dollars in the past each year of the event. Each year of the event, we have lived up to our end of things, and we have put on a good community event. So we're asking for your endorsement for an increase in what they have already contributed. That increase, what we're looking for is, is $5,000 for this year, towards this year's budget. Number two, we're seeking permission to place signage on city property, specifically places like the library lawn. That's a great place to be seen. We can put tasteful signage with our branded logos that people have come to recognize in a way that has been approved by the city, and we would work with the city to make sure that that is tasteful advertising that, that they feel comfortable with, and it is only in locations that have been approved. Number three, we are asking the city to grant us a reduced rate for Cheadle Park. Last year, you guys gave us Cheadle Park as a consideration, as a sponsorship from the city. We're not asking you to do that again, we're asking for a reduced rate, and this will move us closer to each year to, to not needing that anymore. We're asking that, let's consider a $100 a day rental versus $0 a day. That is what we are proposing. Reasons that we believe that we have earned this support. We have a zero incident track record. Our event and its three existence has never had a single incident requiring law enforcement, not once. Community first, we're a family-friendly event that puts an eye on community first. Our event vibe and overall feel has reflected this. Inspiration. Our event's ultimate goal is to inspire people to take an interest in music. Statistics show that young people who are participating in music or sports as a child have higher earning potential as adults. They learn problem-solving skills and learn to adapt to things that are new. They also show more creativity, and social skills are improved. National attention. We drew from 11 states. We made Lebanon a destination, not a pass-through. People came here for their vacations from 11 different states. They came from as far as New York and Florida to come to Lebanon, Oregon for a concert. That's a big deal. Increased attendance. Last summer, we grew from 1,800 in year two to 4,000. That's tremendous. That is the kind of trend that you want as you're building a nationally-known event that can draw attention to your city. That's what you're looking for. National acts want to come here. That's tough. It's extremely It's extremely difficult to get to the point where top booking agencies will work with you. We have earned that trust, and we are now viewed as a desirable event that national acts want to come to. This is big. Nationally-known events do not grow on trees. They just don't. When I came to you in 2014 and said I'm gonna hand you on a silver platter, an event that'll get national attention, a lot of what I got was, good luck, kid, we support you. We lived up to our end, and we need support to continue that trend. The time is now. With the recent devise of the Willamette Valley Country Music Festival in Brownsville, interest in our event has increased. The iron is hot. It's time to strike now if we want to build what they have out in Sweet Home. Now imagine, if the Downtown Association of Sweet Home needed extra money, Jamboree could help them, because they're strong enough. They've got a big enough budget to help their local communities. If we get to a point where we're drawing from increased number of states, and we have an increase in attendance, and we get to a point of 25,000 a day, we're going to have funding to put back into this community. This is a genuine opportunity to grow something really big that can help other areas of our community, and we've proven that we're gonna do this support. We gave the Boys and Girls Club free passes for every family. These are the types of things that we're gonna continue to do in our community, and, you know, I gotta say to the Boys and Girls Club, thank you very much. I grew up in Lebanon, and I know I'm over. I'm 10 seconds away.
Go ahead.
I grew up in Lebanon. I stood in line, you know, getting government cheese with me and both my brothers. We grew up in a low-income home. We went to the Boys and Girls Club in the small, tiny, little building across from where they are now. If I didn't have that place, I don't know where I'd be today, so thank you very much, Chris, for continuing that. Last two bullet points. Grassroots beginning. We were started by people from Lebanon. A lot of our board members grew up right here in this town, where we're from here. And resident pricing. We support our community by offering discounts to our local residents. It's important that we don't price our community out of this event. And one last tiny benefit, there's interest in First Fridays from some of these national acts. If we can enhance our event, we can be known as a place that is a good place for national acts and above, you know, mid-nationals, family-friendly acts. We can help support places like the Downtown Association. I've already started conversations with Uvett on how we can help them to improve. So, we are a community-minded event, and the support we're asking for is simply an endorsement, use of public property, and a decreased rate on the park.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please.
You mentioned board members, and one of the big differences between the Jamboree and the Willamette Country Music Festival was, one was a for-profit.
Yes.
And, and, and it's gone, and one was a nonprofit, and so how were you structured?
Yes. So, the difference between us and the Bymark Country Music Festival is, that was a large corporation coming in from outside the city that was putting profits first, and they were putting community second. What was described by Nyquist was a, what was it, what did he say? It was something about a gross negligent alcohol rampant-fueled event that put profits first and community second. We've never had any of those issues at our event because we are very cognizant of how we affect our community. We don't want to send those problems back out into our community. And so far, our event itself, although for-profit, has never even recouped a penny of what we've put out to put the event on, let alone made any profit. We've done this, and the reason that this has happened is, we've put community first. We've made sure that we put the things that are important first, and we know that if we continue to do that, the reviews we've gotten from the musicians, from the booking agencies, and from our community, and our attendees, has been A-plus across the board. The money will come if we continue our path. So, we are different because we are from this community. I was the director of Hope for Kids Foundation, a nonprofit that I started myself with my own money. Now, this is a kid that was, grew up poor, standing in line for government cheese, so I've been down the road of for-profit. We started that to raise money for after-school programs, all after-school programs, and the reason that we did that was to help anyone that, anyone that wanted something to do after school that was gonna keep them out of trouble, 'cause that was a problem growing up, you know? We found that sustaining a nonprofit, when no one gets paid, and all there is is the work they can do after work, you fall short. So, we decided to start this project as a for-profit event, where eventually, we would have paid employees that would put their full efforts into making sure that we have a community event that is sustainable.
Gary would like to say something.
Counsel, you've been presented with some requests here that I would propose that you not deliberate long on them tonight. I think it would be much better for us if it was scheduled as an agenda item, perhaps at the February meeting. Meanwhile, your staff can put together a staff report that analyzes the requests, help you get some insight on what's being asked, and in addition, the part about the reduction of the park fee, that is, there's a required process for you to go through based on our financial policies, so I think it'd be wise for us to step back and consider this formally as an agenda item at the next meeting.
I agree, and I would not request that you make any decisions today.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, and part of that, I also, you talked about that no law enforcement was used, and so I wanted to know, A, do you have your own security, and did you double-check to make sure that, yes, maybe you didn't have a problem out in your field, but that didn't bleed back into the community, and I don't know if that's...
So, the one complaint that we've been made aware of was a noise complaint, and that individual actually lives outside of city limits and was informed that we had a permit, that we were within our permit limitations, and as far as I know, that's the only incident that we have had. We have worked with law enforcement, and we have worked with the reserves to make sure that we have, in year one, they were out, just to make sure that, you know, we were a new event. Since then, they have come and they have observed, and we do have our own professional security that we have. Yes, our insurance requires it. When you're doing a national-type event with national acts and OLCC involved, there is nothing that you can do that is not completely above board. I mean, for example, our event insurance for the weekend is $7,500 alone, just to be insured, to have a safe event, and that insurance includes coverage for the city of Lebanon and Cheadle Park and the Lebanon Community Foundation. So, everything about what we do is above board, and...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we go? Okay. Okay, anyone else like to speak to council? What?
So, we are here for Live Longer Lebanon. Real quick, before we jump into it, I just wanted to say that as a downtown property owner going through the Transom Windows Project, the LDA has been fundamental in making that a reality, not only in helping me get through the grants and everything like that, but the connections that they've fostered with the state. I know full-heartedly that had I not been connected with the Downtown Association, I wouldn't have been able to talk to Joy Sears, or Curry Gill, or Cherie, that one I don't, Stewart, Cherie Stewarts, and they helped give me the right things that I needed to put in the grant. They helped me along the process, and they are excited to help the Downtown Association. Joy Sears is their revitalization specialist, and she's excited to partner with the Design Committee to start to recruit downtown projects, and I think the combination of the design efforts with the new Downtown URD is gonna have a great impact, so I wanted to give a quick shout-out to the Downtown Association for that. With Live Longer Lebanon, thank you so much for the proclamation. That is awesome.
We're excited.
We are very excited. Deb is very sad that she could not be here tonight. Half of you probably have emails along that effect from her, but she made sure that we were going to be here to speak up, to say thank you, and to let everybody know that there was a hiccup in the website, and again, we don't control the website. They believe it will be ready by February 1 in time for the challenge, but just in case it isn't ready, we have taken the liberty of putting all of our documents up on a Google Drive account for Live Longer Lebanon, and that link is posted on the Facebook page. It's pinned to the top. We also have an email that we're happy to share. Anybody needs it, DM me on Facebook, and I'll get you it real quick. But yeah, we are excited to do the 5200 Challenge in February, and thank you so much again for your support.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
For being here.
Anyone else like to address council? I couldn't see back there. Was there anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our regular session. First up, Porter Park Community Garden Agreement, Jason Williams.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, Porter Park Community, Porter Community Park Garden is nearing completion and construction. And with that, the person that's kind of been along for the ride with us for the last three years has been Cheryl Castine. So, we're requesting a council motion to approve the attached Porter Park Community Garden Coordinator Agreement, which is a position that would be held by Cheryl Castine, who is a master gardener, and has kind of helped us along this process, getting it created from the initial stages.
I think having somebody with her expertise and experience is gonna be fantastic for us, so I would gladly move to approve the Porter Park Community Garden Coordinator Agreement.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Porter Park Community Garden Coordinator Agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, and thank you for all your work on that. The garden's looking great, and I know Cheryl has been in on this from the beginning, and she was excited about it when we even told her about it, and I think she's the right person to do it.
I saw on Facebook the classes she's doing.
Yes.
So, free classes and...
I believe they're all full.
Free classes, free seeds, free...
Oh, she's here. I didn't even see her.
She's in the audience.
Yeah, that's really very exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Cheryl.
Yeah, her effort has made it possible for us to even do it. I mean, to manage all those garden plots and rentals is...
Yeah, I thought you were gonna do it.
No, I'm good.
Thanks, Jason. Next up, City Managers Report, Gary Marks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, rather than going to kind of a review of the last month, I thought that with a new council and a new year, that I'd give you a quick look forward to what you can expect with the city this year. We've got an exciting year ahead of us and some exciting projects that we're gonna be bringing to completion. First and foremost is a project that we've been, as a city, focused on for more than a decade, and that's our water treatment plant, and I'm happy to tell you that we expect the new plant to enter service this March. And so, as we approach that date, we'll make you aware of an official ribbon-cutting that we're planning, and we plan to celebrate this well because it's a huge accomplishment for this community, for the city. It's the single-largest capital improvement project the city has ever undertaken, and it really does secure our viability as a community going forward. Nothing is more important than the water supply for a community, and I'm also happy to say that it also signals our official break from our long, decades-long agreement with the city of Albany, where water was taken out of their canal. With the service, bringing the new plant online and into service will mark the first time in, I don't know, a very long time that we drew our water directly from the San Am River. So, that's something that I'm looking forward to celebrating with all of you. The next item I'm excited about is our new Porter Park Community Garden, which we're expecting to ramp up this spring. You just heard about an aspect of that. It was in, it's on the front page of Lebanon Express this week, and I think this is gonna be a great addition for not only this community, but that specific neighborhood. That's a neighborhood that has needed some assistance in joining the prosperity of the rest of the community, and I think, if you go out there now, you already see some effects on the private properties that are positive for what's going on there with the garden and also the street projects that are adjacent to it. I'll pause for a minute. So, the next thing for us to look forward to is the accomplishment of our North Side Welcome Monument at Academy Square. It's under construction now. In the next several weeks, you'll see the structure actually coming up out of the ground. We expect to have it completed this spring. On the heels of that project, there'll be a major landscape project there on the side of Academy Square that faces the Main Street. That, along with a memorial to the late mayor tombs, will be incorporated into that project, so I'm looking forward to seeing that come forward. That's probably this summer with the landscape project. Also, beginning later this month, our new Ralston Park Improvement Plan Committee that'll be chaired by Council President Bowlin, will start moving, and we expect that to be completed by June at the latest. I'm excited about that because of the critical nature and the importance of Ralston Park as our central park, and the ways it contributes to our community, which are all very important, to make sure that going forward into our future, we're making that park everything it should be and can be to support our community, and I'm excited about seeing what the work of that committee brings us. After that, the next project, which some of you talked about in the campaign, I'm happy to tell you that a huge part of the West Side Sewer Interceptor Project is expected this summer, and it'll be that section along Airway Road from Oak all the way down to Keys, so a massive amount of that project. It's not the whole project. We've got a lot more to do, but it is a, it's a great further investment into the need for improvement to our sewer service on that end of town. I'm also happy to say that this summer, you'll see a sidewalk access ramp project taking place on Grove Street at both of the intersections of Ash and Sherman, all four corners, and those two intersections will either be improved, either are ramps there now, or new ramps altogether will be installed, all that meets current specs for handicap accessibility. Also, you can expect this summer for us to complete the City Hall and Second Street Water Plant Facilities Master Plan. Of course, City Hall continues to be a challenge for us as we continue to grow, and the building continues to deteriorate, so we'll be having some great discussions about all of that by summer at the latest, I think. Our wetlands mitigation strategy study is currently underway for our undeveloped industrial lands, most of which are on the west side of town. As many of you know, the reason those properties have not been developing is because when you add in the cost of the land, along with the cost of mitigating the wetlands that predominate those properties, the all-in cost to bring living wage jobs to our community is too high for the private sector. We're looking at ways to mitigate that in an environmentally responsible way. We have engaged Econ Northwest, which is an economic analysis firm, to help us develop and weigh out some options, which will all be brought to you in the form of a report, so that you will know what your policy options are, and hopefully, we can get some traction on that front this year. Also, a smaller project, but I think a fun one, will be the enhancement of our city's electric service capacity for our downtown area. What I'm talking about there is our ability to light things up in the holidays on Main Street. We hope to light up the trees next year. We put up new decorations this year that you may have noticed. We plan to ramp that up for the next holiday season, and I'm also eager to talk to the downtown folks about how we might incentivize some of the building owners to add lights to their buildings. I think if we could make our downtown into a special holiday place, I can't think of many others in this area of the valley that do that, so I think we could have a niche during the holiday season. And then, well, all these positive things I've talked about, there is a significant challenge that we'll face this year, and that is developing our fiscal year 1920 budget in terms of dealing with the next installment of the PERS payment increase. Two years ago, we saw an increase of about 30% in that cost. We're expecting the same kind of increase this year. Coupled with all the other things that go along with a growing community as ours, it'll be a bit of a challenge. So, but I think we're up for it, and we've positioned ourselves well financially, so we should weather it okay, but still, there are gonna be some trade-offs and some... But still, there are going to be some trade-offs and some value judgments that you and the Budget Committee will need to look at. So, just wanted to bring you some good news, and then also the sober news about what we're going to need to do with our budget. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
And welcome new members. It's great to have you on board. You've come at a great time. We've got some good things going on.
Thank you, Gary. All right. Items from counsel. We have the first one up, Trees and Trails Advisory Committee update for Rebecca.
Yes. We just met, we met in October. We congratulated Ron as our chair and Rod Sal, who everybody knows has been really involved in BLT, and he's our vice chair. We're going to be, we took a tour of every trail on the BLT Trail System, and to get familiar with that, we are going to start going through the Trails and Tree Committee bylaws and the whole book, and that we meet next, is it next week?
Yes.
Yeah, we meet next week, so it'll be a good little committee.
Good.
Oh, and I would like to also thank Counselor Bowlin for shaving this off. That was horrible to look at. Now that you're across there, I have to look at it, so, thank you.
Did you want to mention the other thing you brought up to me?
I'd encourage Counselor Griselda to shave hers, but I...
Oh, burn, okay. All right. Moving on. No, but I would like to also mention that today is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and so, less important. I'm going to table that. But no, it is, it is an official Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and so, I would just like to take a second to thank our law enforcement officers. We really do have a great law enforcement force, so, thank you for all you guys do. That, it hurts me.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anything else from counsel?
I have a couple of things.
Go ahead, sure.
One is our Republic Services notice that they're going to go to every other week on the above-ground containers. Neighbors in my neighborhood are very irritated that that's something they're going to have to deal with, if they have large lots and a lot of trees, so there's grass and leaves that every other week doesn't accommodate that need. Plus, we've been paying for that every week, and now they're going to continue to get that fee plus cut back the service.
Yeah, I was a little frustrated when I saw the schedule came out the other day and that it's now going to be every other week, and they came to us asking for the increase that we would have it every week. That was the goal.
That's right.
And now, they've changed it without talking to us, and suddenly, now it's going to be every other week is going to be yard debris.
Yeah, I would like to clarify that because somebody asked me if it was going to every other week, and I said, "No, I've not seen anything." We had a specific increase for that.
But it's on the schedule. They just mailed it out. I got it the other day, put it on the refrigerator.
I've got to hope that that is a...
Well, I think that's something that we can...
The misprint.
We have a report coming up anyways that we're going to be discussing on Republic Services anyways. I think that's something that we should roll in there and talk about that issue also.
Well, and I just want to make sure that's not the glass, correct?
No.
No, this is the yard debris...
No, I know it, the yard debris, but it being on the schedule is every other week because I know the glass is...
Right. Glass is usually every...
That's what I thought it was. It was glass.
Opposing week for that.
Yeah, the new schedule says that yard debris will be every other week.
Yeah, we need some clarification on that.
Hopefully, that's wrong.
You know, they, just to continue on their announcement of their surcharges at the dump stations, the fees that are going to be charged, they're astronomical, although they did back off about 50%. It's still roughly $55, $60 to go out there to dump a pickup load of garbage. The second item I have is I was a little disappointed that we took down our beautiful new Christmas decorations before the New Year. I think they need to maintain...
No, we didn't.
No, I didn't think we did.
Yeah.
Took them down on January 2.
Yeah.
I saw them. I was out on Main Street that morning.
Well, I got calls saying that they were down the week of Christmas.
They must have had a really good New Year's.
I don't know what they saw, but I can guarantee you the decorations didn't come down until the 2nd.
Good. Because I didn't go check.
Maybe that was the park.
I just listened to my neighbors.
Everything?
Anything else? Okay. Seeing none from counsel. Oh, I did have one thing. In, it was early December, I attended the League of Oregon Cities, my first board meeting with them, and it was very interesting, and it was, it's a very exciting... The League of Oregon Cities has a new director that started last year. There was a lot of difficulties within it. There was, if you're familiar with LGPI, the insurance arm of them, that was going bankrupt. There was a lot of problems. They've reined everything in. They've brought LGPI under the auspices of the LOC now, so that's actually theirs. They haven't stopped service at all. The new director, I think, is fantastic, and I think the new board is really going to do some great things for our cities. It was really exciting. It was long. It was three long days because they had an indoctrination for new board members, and then there was a retreat that we had that was kind of a goal-setting retreat, and then we had a board meeting the last day. So, there was a lot of different things. A lot of people who had been on the LOC retired or got off the board, so it was very, very positive. It'll be interesting to see how things go. They've rebranded themselves. They've got a new logo. Personally, I did not like the logo at all, but that was just me. But they, the exciting thing is, is I think that they're going to be a better organization than they were. I think they're going to be more responsive to us as cities, and it's really important for us because these are critical services, that we look to them for things. You know, when we're looking at comparison of how different managers are paid, things like that, we look to them for all that kind of information, so it's really important.
And legislative.
Legislative also, yes, absolutely. So, anyways, that was what I did in early December. Next up, we have another opportunity for public comments. Is there anybody that would like to speak to counsel?
Some wish their husband a happy birthday or any of that.
Seeing none. Items from press? Nothing from the press. Next scheduled counsel meetings, February 13 is a regular session, March 13 is a regular session, and then 27, we do have a work session, elected official training, and that will be by the LOC that will be coming in and doing that training, so. With that, we're adjourned.